302. First order of business, pledge allegiance to the flag. Dr. Chernus, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the special board of education meeting agenda for June 23, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Public communications, public comment on closed session items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board on closed session agenda items. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board reserves right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes. Directions of how to submit a comment are available at www.pvpusd.net/feedback. Do we have any public comment on closed session items?
We have no public comments.
Public comment on open session agenda items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board during each agenda item. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board deserves right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. Directions of how to submit a comment are available at www.pvpusd.net/feedback. Do we have any public comment on open session agenda items?
We have no public comments.
We will now move to section E, the Brown Act Workshop presented by AALR. Mr. Ron Wenkard.
That would help. Thank you. Thank you. Does he hear me better? Okay. So I thought I had him all, everything down. I missed one thing. Okay. So, oh, let me introduce myself to you. I'm Ron Wenkard. I'm a partner at the law firm of Atkins and Anderson, lawyer Rudin Romo. I've been with the firm about three years now. Prior to that time, I was general counsel for the Orange County Department of Education, and I had been there for quite a long time, about 35, 30, yeah, 34, 35 years. So, I'm familiar with the Brown Act, have, you know, attended a lot of public meetings, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So if we go to the next slide, as I said, it includes discussion, debate, and acquisition of information, all has to be conducted in public, with the exception of closed, there's certain exceptions for closed sessions, which you're probably familiar with, but I'll get to it a little bit later. We'll talk about some of those closed session exceptions. Brown Act does not apply to staff meetings and meetings that involve administrative staff, just elected board members.
Excuse me, Ron, just a point of clarification on that last point. We do have members of our board-appointed committees here as well in the audience and tuning in. So we have board-appointed committees, budget advisory committee, tech facility advisory committee, and these are subject to the Brown Act.
Yes. Those committees, any committees that are appointed by the board are subject to the Brown Act. I'm not sure if I included that in the formal presentation, but thank you for bringing that up. That's an important point, that any committee that's appointed by the board is also subject to the Brown Act. So what is a meeting? How does the Brown Act define a meeting? It's defined as any congregation of a majority of members of the legislative body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate upon any item. So it's a very broad definition. It's evolved over time. Frequently, what's happened is there's been concerns raised by the public about something that's happened at a city council meeting, or a board of supervisors meeting, or a school board meeting, and then the legislature steps in and tightens up the Brown Act. So periodically, every four or five years, the legislature steps in and tightens up the Brown Act. Am I muted?
I apologize. If you just, if people are not here, right, you know, we're going to try.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Andrew.
Nope, no problem. These things happen. You got to roll with the punches. So, so looking at this definition, and it talks about in the same time and place, so if you have three board members of five in the same time and place, now you're talking about a congregation of board members. So if you hear anything, or discuss anything, or deliberate on anything that's related to school district business, you're in violation of the Brown Act. If you don't post the agenda and follow the agenda as far as the meeting is concerned. So if three of you got together, for example, at a local coffee shop, and started talking about school district business, then you'd be in violation of the Brown Act. If you were there just to talk about everything except school district business, then you're okay. But you run into problems if you, the three of you, three of you would congregate somewhere and the public saw you, they might jump to the conclusion that you're violating the Brown Act. So that's something to keep in mind.
Mr. Wenkard, just for clarification, for our BAC and FAC, they would be limited and confined to matters in front of their committee, not necessarily school board or school district business.
So, for example, how many members are on those committees?
So they have five, typically seven.
Seven.
Seven. So then it would be four, but they could get around and they could talk about our music program, as long as it didn't impact the budget, which is what they are assigned.
They're the budget advisory committee, so, yeah, they would, if they're talking the business that comes before them, and there's four of them in a place outside of a meeting that's not noticed and agenda posted and so on, they'd be in violation of the Brown Act.
Right. So just for clarification, though, it's like, they're not prohibited from the four of them talking about school district business, they're just prohibited from talking about business that their committee would.
Yeah, if it's outside their committee's purview, outside of their committee's jurisdiction, yeah, they would be okay.
So, Ron, on those committees also, we have non-voting members. So is this really a majority of the voting members, or is it just the majority of the members?
Well, it'd be a majority of the members who are appointed. So these non-voting members, are they appointed by the board as well?
They're, well, we, the resolution says, for example, like, various organizations, like the booster clubs from each of the high schools will have a representative, and the PTA will have a representative on the committee as well, but that the voting members are, you know, appointed by the board. And then that, you know, from applications, there'll be five voting members, and there might be 10 non-voting members who participate in the meetings.
To be sure on, to give you a definitive answer, I'd probably need to see the resolution, see how they were appointed, and do a little research. That's a new twist for me.
So maybe.
I've dealt with committees, but not with a committee, the way you described it, with non-voting members. So I'm not sure, sitting here, whether they are, they would, under the Brown Act, they would be considered members of a committee since they're non-voting. So we'd have to look at that. And so if you want us to look at it, we'd be happy to look at it and, you know, give you a more definitive answer.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so if we go to the next slide, let's see. So basically, the prohibition is that a majority of the members of the legislative body. So to go back to your committee question, we'd have to look at, what's the definition of a legislative body in relation to committees? Is it only voting members or non-voting members? And that's what I'm not sure of. And then it says, "shall not, outside of a meeting, use a series of communications of any kind, directly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body." So that's the key when you're coming to the committees. It's talking about subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So the committee's subject matter jurisdiction would be much narrower than yours would be. So if they're talking about things that don't relate to their subject matter jurisdiction, they're probably okay. Whereas your subject matter jurisdiction's pretty broad, as far as the school district is concerned. And so this has, this gets involved with text messages, emails, and so on, which we'll talk about a little bit more, any type of serial communication. They wrote it in a way so that it would encompass new technology as well as the technology that existed at the time they wrote this. So separate conversations or communications outside of a meeting are permissible so long as the person does not communicate to other members of the board the comments or positions of any other board member. So that's kind of a mouthful. It's kind of complicated, but what they're really trying to say is, two of you can talk to each other about anything you want, talk about, you know, board business and so on. But once board member A and B, one of them has, board member A and B have a conversation, once you involve board member C by disclosing, you know, what your position is on a matter, then you're in violation of the Brown Act. You need to be very careful about how you communicate those conversations. So, for example, board member A and B can have a conversation, and then board member A and C can have a conversation, but board member A cannot tell board member C what, the content of the prior conversation they had with board member B. So, does that make sense? I'm not.
In that situation, board member A and B, you know, Brown Act buddy, and they're talking about this issue, and board member C writes an email to a member of the public, which, you know, basically outlines some of the issues around whatever topic is being considered. And then the member of the public forwards that email to another, you know, to a broad set of the public, and it comes to the attention of the other four board members. So what's that situation?
That could get into a violation of the Brown Act, because it talks about intermediaries. And then you get into the intent. Was the intent of the board member who sent it to the member of the public to let that board member of the public then communicate it out to the community, which could include another board member? So you're running into a situation where you could end up in a violation of the Brown Act, because it talks about intermediaries. I think I mentioned this in one of the slides, let's see, I mentioned it. Yeah, it talks about directly or through intermediaries. So if it wasn't the intent, then, you know, maybe there won't be a Brown Act violation. But, you know, if you get, if the district attorney gets involved and somebody alleges there was a criminal violation of the Brown Act, then you're going to have to explain this, that wasn't my intent. I didn't intend for this to be communicated to another board member. I wasn't using this person as an intermediary. I was just telling them what the conversation was. So I would caution you, if you're going to want to talk to a member of the public, it's certainly fine to tell them what your position is on a topic, but, you know, if you start to tell them what the other board member's position was, or what your private conversation with another board member was, you're going to run into problems. So let's take a hypothetical. Let's say you're thinking about closing one of your schools. And, and I hope that's not too touchy a topic here, it can be sometimes, but let's just say hypothetically. And so your position is, as board member A, Mr. Phillips, that you want to, you think you need to close the school. So you talk to board member B, and board member B says, "Yeah, I agree with you. I think we need to close the school." Well, if you send out an email to a member of the public saying, "I had a conversation with board member B, and board member B agrees with me that we should close the school," and now that intermediary sends it to board member C and says, "Board member A and B are in favor of closing the school," you've got potential Brown Act violation. So you need to avoid that.
Right. But what if I just don't mention board member B in that email, and just tell, you know, member of the public, Bill, I hear what you're saying about the schools here, and I agree with you, and I understand your points, and...
So that would be okay, because then you're just disclosing your position. Or if you issue a public statement that, you know, you're in favor of whatever the proposition might be, then you're okay. But if you start talking about what other board members have told you, and you start disclosing it to third parties, you're going to, you could end up in a Brown Act violation, because somebody's going to say, "No, you did this on purpose, you did this intentionally, and, you know, you used this person as an intermediary." So you really need to be careful about that. And so what we always recommend is, you know, especially with emails, you know, just email with a single board member, don't copy the whole board. You certainly can communicate with the superintendent, and the superintendent can communicate separately with board members, but if you start to, if you copy, you hit reply to all, and you copy all of the board members, and then they respond back, now you're starting a serial communication. So you have to avoid doing that. And so I mentioned that in the slide here, that you could end up in that type of situation. So these next slides kind of give the hypothetical, which I've kind of already covered, so I'll jump over those. But as I say in this slide, as soon as three of five or four of seven board members participate in a series of communications of any kind to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that's within the subject jurisdiction of the legislative body, a violation of the Brown Act has occurred. So if we put it in the context of the committees that you mentioned, and let's say there's seven members of that committee, and it's a budget committee, and that's their subject matter jurisdiction, and they, and committee member A communicates to committee member B saying, "I think we should delete this item, item number four, from the budget. We're going to, we should recommend to the board that item number four be deleted from the budget." And then committee member A tells committee member C, so now there's three people involved. And then they get four people, you know, to say, "Yes, let's delete item number four." Now you've got a Brown Act violation. And if they send that out to a member of the community, and that could include a non-voting member of that committee, saying, "Well, committee members A, B, and C are in favor of recommending deletion of item number four from the budget," and then the committee member sends that to a fourth committee member, now you're talking about a Brown Act violation. So the committee members need to be careful as well about how they communicate to make sure that they don't violate the Brown Act. So individual contacts or conversations are fine, but you can't bring in, when you have a five-member board, you can't bring in a third person, or if you have a seven-member committee or board, you can't bring in a fourth person. Okay, so let me just take a look here. There's some exceptions to these rules. Social gatherings, where you don't discuss among yourselves other than part of a scheduled program, business of nature that's within the subject matter jurisdiction. So let's say you go to a conference, like the CSBA conference. You can all sit together, but if you can't start talking about your district business. You can talk about state issues in general, you can talk about the issues that CSBA is talking about at the state level, but you can't start talking about, "Well, at our next board meeting, we should take this action." And if there's three of you there, then you've got a Brown Act violation. So even if only two of you are talking, if the third person's there, and here is what you say, now you've got a Brown Act violation. So I mentioned CSBA conferences, open and publicized meetings, like city council meetings or board of supervisors meetings, that you might go to. You can sit together, but if you start to talk about school district business, and there's three of you there, then you've got a violation of the Brown Act. But if you're just there to talk about things that are outside your subject matter jurisdiction, then it may not be a Brown Act violation. But most of the time, if three of you are going to go to a board of supervisors meeting, it's usually somehow related to the school district business. I mean, unless it's a purely county issue that has nothing to do with the school district, but you need to be careful that typically that, if you're going to attend a city council meeting or board of supervisors meeting, it's usually something in relation to the school district, maybe a zoning issue, or some type of public health issue or something.
Can I ask, interrupt you and ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
We've had instances in the past where the board has voted to support or oppose something at a city or county level, and then we would be going to the meeting after the fact to ask the county, for example, to act on it. So we've already made our decision. When we passed a social host ordinance in our committee, that community that comes to mind. So we didn't send three of us there, but if we'd already taken our action, which only was to support the supervisor's resolution, then we wouldn't be making any further decisions on that, or having any further conversation on it. Is that still not okay, or yes?
Tell me what the social host issue is.
It's, it was a PTA-sponsored piece of legislation that bans parents from serving alcohol to minors in their homes, and it's a civil citation. So we asked the supervisors to support it. And so I think only two of us went to the meeting, but I'm thinking, we'd already, if three of us would have, because we were adamantly interested in it, or there was something at our city level, if three of us live in the same city, but we'd already voted to support or oppose something, does that matter or not?
It could, yeah. If two of you go, that's not a problem.
I haven't done that, but I'm just thinking, could it happen? Okay.
Yeah. If three of you go, and you separately speak, let's take a city council example. So three of you get up and speak during public comments in favor of a city ordinance on the social host issue, that's not a problem. But if the three of you sit together and start to discuss what you're going to say to the city council, then I think that's a Brown Act violation, because that's an overlapping issue. That's an issue that affects the city, and it also affects the school district, because you took action on it, you took business on it. So my recommendation is, if three of you are going to go to a city council meeting on an issue like that, that you don't sit together. You just sit apart, so that nobody in the audience is going to say, "Hey, I saw the three of you, you know, sitting together, plotting what you were going to talk about." You know, that's a violation of the Brown Act. You know, somebody could sit the row behind you and eavesdrop on you what you're talking about as well, or even try to tape record it, because they're allowed to tape record city council meetings, just like they're allowed to tape record school board meetings. So you could run into issues with the Brown Act. So my recommendation would be, don't sit together. You can each individually advocate for that social host measure, or whatever measure it might be, but that's an issue that affects both the school district and the city. And typically, that would be the case. That's usually why you would go to a city council meeting.
Once it's no longer, once that was approved, that's still considered within the purview of the district, once that ordinance, once we pass that resolution?
Well, because there's lots of issues related to that. You know, this, you know, this, if, it could come back to the school board, because maybe the city refuses to act on it, so you want to take further action, or you want to have further discussion, to put further pressure on the city. Or the city enacts an ordinance, but it's not quite what you wanted, so you want to urge the city to modify the ordinance in a different way. There could be all kinds of ramifications. There could be insurance issues, or you might want to change your policies to make sure you don't run afoul of this, you know, social host ordinance by, you know, let's say they enact an ordinance that creates liability, you know, if they have a, they're going to cite people for, you know, serving alcohol to minors, let's say. You know, that affects your extracurricular activities, and you want to make sure, for example, you might have a discussion about making sure that your staff knows not to overlap extracurricular activities with events that are hosted at somebody's house, so you avoid the alcohol problem. You may not want to go that far, but that might be a discussion that you have. So the issues are kind of intertwined. You need to make sure, even after, after you've taken action on an item, it could come back to you. There could be spin-off issues related to it. So I would recommend you don't sit together, and you make sure you don't have a discussion together.
That's a good explanation. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, it's purely ceremonial or social occasions, that's not prohibited. So, you know, you're having a retirement celebration for an employee, it's not a notice meeting, it's here in the boardroom, the five of you are together, you just can't talk about school district business. If you start talking about what's going to be on the next agenda, or, you know, "We should have put this item on the agenda," or "We shouldn't have put this item on the agenda," or any kind of issue like that, then, and there's three of you involved, then it's a Brown Act violation. But if you're here to just thank the employee for their service, and you talk about your families, and you talk about your kids, and you talk about things in general, then there's no problem. So that's what they mean when they say not to talk about things within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. And then a legislative body, open and notice meeting, that would be like a city council meeting, or a county board of supervisors, or maybe a standing committee of a city council. They might have some committees as well. Okay, so let's see. Any questions before we move to the next topic about open meeting requirements? Okay. So in general, all meetings of the board have to be in open session. And then there's exceptions. You know, there's the exception for litigation, when you meet with your attorney. There's an exception for real property, when you meet with your negotiator. There's exception for labor relations, and there's exceptions for personnel. But if it doesn't fit into one of those exceptions, then it has to be an open session. And when they, the way they define action in a, in the Brown Act, is a collective decision made by a majority of the members to make a positive or negative decision. That's usually by an actual vote, but it doesn't have to be. Sometimes, I'm sure you act informally, you might be, have a discussion on topic, and you might say to the superintendent, "We'd like to put that on the agenda for the next board meeting as a possible action item, we'd like you to bring that back." You don't necessarily take a formal vote, everybody kind of agrees, and so you go ahead and do that. That's considered action as well, and that's permissible. But what you can't do is take action by a secret ballot. You have to, your vote has to be public. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to be roll call vote. If it's an open meeting, and people are in the audience, and they can see how you voted, that's not a problem. But if you do a Zoom meeting, or you do it by teleconference prior to the pandemic, then it has to be by roll call vote, so that the public can hear how everybody voted. So I'm going to skip over the issues on teleconferencing, unless somebody has an issue, because those are suspended by executive order during the pandemic. So they're not, there's a number of restrictions involving teleconferences, and those don't really apply right now, so I'll leave, I'll leave those aside unless somebody has a specific question about that. So I mentioned, no action can be taken by secret ballot. You have to publicly report any action that's taken, how each vote was taken by each board member prior to taking any action with respect to the compensation for superintendents or assistant superintendents. This is a relatively new requirement, and you may have already experienced this. There has to be an oral report on the recommendation for increasing the salary, or approving the contract of superintendents or assistant superintendents before you take final action. That's a relatively new requirement. Okay.
So, Ron, I guess we're like halfway through, and I know you have a bunch of items in here where you cite cases of actual enforcement. I guess in particular, I'm interested wherever you can, and let us know what actually are the areas of grayness and how they're being decided.
Oh, okay.
Because I think for most of us, except for Ami, because he's new to our board, we've had some amount of, you know, Brown Act training in the past.
Oh, okay.
And that's certainly where, at least, I think I could use for a refresher most.
Well, okay, yeah, I was, a couple of slides ahead, there's some talking about open meeting requirements, so I will, I'll make sure I don't skip that slide.
I think, you know, if you were to just move relatively quickly through, and then, you know, Ami, if you have any questions, just pause him.
Okay. Well, let me just quickly, without going through each slide on the agenda. The key thing about agendas is the need to be clear enough so that the public knows what you're going to be talking about. And then a couple of slides ahead, let me see if I can find it here. Here it is. Okay. The example in this case called Moreno versus City of King, the Court of Appeals said that the agenda item that said public employee employment contract was insufficient, because the, there was, the agenda's description provided no clue that the dismissal of a public employee would be discussed at the meeting. So... that the dismissal of a public employee would be discussed at the meeting. So, um, that's an example of, you know, uh, how clear it has to be. There's another case, which I didn't have a slide on, that had just mentioned the name of a school, but didn't mention that the board was going to discuss possible closure of the school. And the court said that was insufficient. The public has to, the agenda description has to be clear enough that the public will have an idea of what you're going to talk about. So if you, you know, if they knew that, uh, you might consider dismissal of an employee, there might be supporters of that employee who may want to come to the board meeting and speak of support in support of that employee. Or if they knew that you were going to possibly close a school, then, uh, people might come and say, we don't want you to close the school. But if you don't make it clear enough, they won't know that that's what you're going to be talking about. So that's the key thing on the agenda.
So on the public employee piece, does that only apply to contracted employees or does that also apply to the, you know, the, the represented employees by the collective bargaining agreements? And then also, there's, there's this issue, right, about protecting employee privacy when there may be disciplinary issues, um, versus, you know, trying to be open? So, so how, how does, how does-
That applies to all employees. Um, and so it would include, you know, bargaining unit employees, management employees, um, not independent contractors though, but, but anybody who's employed, uh, by the school district. Um, and there are some requirements, uh, with respect to, um, giving the public employee 24 hours' notice before the meeting if you're going to hear charges against that employee. So if you've received complaints against an employee and you're going to be discussing those, um, you're required to give notice, uh, to the employee. So there, there's some issues there, uh, that come up. So let's see, uh, any more, I'll jump ahead then on agendas. Let's see what the next topic was. Let's see. Special meetings, um, they can be called at any time. This is a special meeting. Uh, 24 hours' notice is all that's required. Only the business on the special meeting notice may be considered at special meetings. And, um, the thing that you cannot discuss salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for superintendents and assistant superintendents. That's a relatively new requirement as well. Uh, so that can only be done at a regular meeting. So that's kind of an example of the tinkering that the legislature does with the Brown Act. When there's an abuse or worse, there's a, uh, an alleged abuse of the Brown Act, uh, in a particular, in a city, a county or s- s- school district that makes it to the legislature, uh, sometimes the legislature turns around and acts and, uh, adds new requirements into the Brown Act. And this is probably an example of that. Um, there may have been some, you know, concerns raised about that issue. And so they've added that in. Okay. This, you cannot amend the agenda. There's a requirement, there's a, a provision in the Brown Act that allows you to amend the agenda for regular board meetings if there is an issue that arose after you posted the agenda 72 hours before the, um, meeting. Uh, if it needs to be acted upon at that meeting, you're allowed to, um, amend the agenda by two-thirds vote, but you cannot do that at a special board meeting. So this case Boyle versus City of Redondo Beach, uh, was the holding in that case. Any questions before we get into closed sessions? Sorry if I'm rushing a little bit too much, but, uh, the, um, so I mentioned there's authorized closed sessions. Prior to holding any closed session, you have to disclose in an open meeting the items that are going to be discussed in closed session. And I, I saw your agenda for the, your regular boarding meeting that's following this meeting and you've got those items, uh, listed. Um, you can't discuss other items of business in closed session if it's not listed on the agenda. Um, and I mentioned some of the, uh, types of, uh, items for closed session, personnel matters, litigation, real property matters. Uh, these slides that I'm passing by, these kind of talk about some of the ins and outs of that. Uh, salary negotiations, you know, you, with your labor representative, uh, you can discuss those in closed session and give your negotiator direction, uh, on how to proceed with negotiations. Um, the, uh, there's some, uh, language that you've, um, you know, you, one thing that you should keep in mind about closed sessions though, is when you're talking about, uh, labor relations, is that you can't talk about budget priorities. Um, and, uh, back when I first started in this business a while ago, I, when I was up in Kern County before I went to Orange County, um, we had an issue come up in closed session. There was no attorney present. They, the board discussed in closed session, um, the, uh, real property and the possibility of selling it real, or they were talking about labor negotiations and, um, you know, what they should offer the unions. And they were discussing, okay, what's the cost of a 1% increase, uh, you know, for the teachers and for the classified? And so the labor representative told them, you know, it's X amount, let's say $200,000. At that time, this is like 30, 40 years ago. And, um, the, they said, well, how could we, you know, they turned to the assistant superintendent of business and said, um, well, do we have that much money in the budget? And he said, no, we'd have to make some cuts. And so then they proceeded to talk about cuts and they talked about the continuation school and, um, well, what, how much would we save if we closed the continuation high school? They said $200,000. I'm using that as a, the example. I don't remember the exact amount, but this is the general discussion that came out in court. Um, and, uh, so they decided, okay, we'll close the, um, continuation school. We'll give the, we'll approve the, um, raise for the teachers and for the classified employees. They came out in closed session. They announced it. There was nobody there at the time. It was in the minutes. And then a few days later, the newspaper picked up on it. It became news and the parents of the students at the continuation school got upset, started picketing the district office and started demonstrating. So that ended up in a lawsuit, uh, that, that summary that I gave you was public testimony. Um, and the court ruled that, um, that was a violation of the Brown Act. The legislature heard about it. The legislature then added a provision into the Brown Act that said, general discussions about budget priorities, budget cuts, or layoffs have to be in open session. So you have to be careful about what you talk about in closed session. There's certain limits as to what you, um, can talk about. Um, there's recommended formats, uh, in the Brown Act. Um, these slides are those recommended formats. So there's conference with real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel, um, and so on. So I'll just let you look at those on your, uh, at your leisure. Um, the board has to publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present. Um, reports may be made orally and writing. Typically they're made orally when you reconvene, either by the superintendent or the board president typically. Um, the, any documents that are approved in closed session have to be available to the public upon request. Um, you don't have to keep, uh, minutes of closed sessions. You may if you wish, but you're not required to do so. Um, okay, so I mentioned about public action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, you had a question?
So if we were, excuse me, to take minutes or record for closed session, does that then become public record?
If you, I'm sorry, you missed the first part.
So going back to your previous slide,
Oh.
It says that districts may keep minutes or record closed sessions, but are not required to do so. So if we did take minutes or if they were recorded, would that be a-
That would, um-
Is that still privileged and confidential or is that now public record?
It, uh, it would not be a public record, but there would be a record. And if there was any type of litigation or lawsuit, uh, it would have to be disclosed to the court. Uh, when the, it does happen when a court finds a violation of the Brown Act, we'll get to that in a minute. They can order you to record closed sessions. And we had a district in Orange County that had that happen and they were ordered to record their closed sessions and then the court would review those, uh, recordings, uh, on a, of ongoing basis for a period of time. And then they, the, the order expired after a period of time. But, uh, those were not public records, uh, typically. Uh, it would be up to a court to decide whether to make it a public record or not.
Thank you.
So, um, you know, uh, I mentioned about public reports, certain personnel matters. You, you can use employee numbers rather than names. Uh, student discipline, you can use student numbers. Um, let's see. This is an interesting case. You asked about, uh, cases. Um, this was a case in which the, um, city council, the Los Angeles city council, their meeting was broadcast and videotaped. And they were doing a hearing on a zoning matter and, um, a couple of the board, uh, city council members were on their cell phones, not paying attention to the proceedings. And then they voted down the, um, request of the business owner to change the zoning. And so the, the, uh, they, they sued and they said that it wasn't a fair hearing because the city council members weren't paying attention. They were on their phones. Um, and the court agreed. So this is, um, you know, um, somewhat of a gray area because it's hard, you know, I mean, obviously sometimes you get distracted. You know, everybody tries to pay attention. I, every board meeting I've been at, the board members try to pay attention, but, you know, there's always, um, uh, times when you might be distracted. But apparently in this case, they were paying attention the whole, the majority of the time. And that's what got the court's, uh, attention. So I just mentioned that as one of those-
Is there any distinction to the fact that that was a hearing?
That could have made a difference. I mean, they're making a decision on whether to approve a, um, a, uh, a permit with respect to zoning. And, uh, you know, uh, I suppose if it was, you know, a, a different type of matter, maybe it wouldn't have been as pressing. But of course, this mattered a lot. There was a lot of money at stake for this particular business owner in this case. Um, cities tend to deal with that type of thing, um, more that involve money. But, uh, you know, it could involve, you know, I mean, uh, if you had a matter that you, before you that involved, uh, you know, discipline of an employee or discipline of a student and you weren't paying attention, I could see possibly somebody bringing a lawsuit because it, to them, there's a lot at stake involved. So, um, I, I just mentioned it as a cautionary tale. It doesn't mean you should never go on your cellphone or never look at your cellphone. But, you know, if you're in a, in a one hour period, if you're spending 45 minutes on your phone, um, then I think you're going to, somebody may call you on it. If it's two or three minutes, you know, I don't think it's a big deal.
Right. And I guess that's where the clarification would be important. You know, sometimes, you know, these meetings are seven hours and a board member gets up to, to use the restroom. Does that then render that decision-
I don't see that as a problem either.
-invalid. Right. Um, that's why I would like to look into more depth into this particular ruling to see how that applies to-
This one was an extreme example of an abuse. I mean, they were, uh, you definitely not paying attention. And the court had the recording and looked at it, the video and was just appalled.
So it was egregious, but, you know, just because it was egregious doesn't mean that that doesn't translate later to case law, does it?
No, it doesn't. Well, um, you know, uh, there's a saying in law school, I don't know if any of you are lawyers, but, um, bad facts make bad law. And, you know, bad facts, you know, when they're spending the majority of the time, uh, distracted or on their cell phones, uh, you know, that angers people. That appalled the judge, uh, the trial court judge. And then when it went up on appeal, the, the court of appeal agreed. You know, so let's, and I don't remember the exact details, but let's say that the city council members were on the phone 45 minutes out of an hour of, of a zoning hearing. That's pretty egregious. So now you've got a situation that's where it's 30 minutes out of a, out of an hour. Is that egregious? I don't know. Maybe. Uh, 20 minutes? May, you know, it's hard to say.
But I don't want to belabor, I don't want to belabor this point because we still have more to get through.
Sure.
Perhaps maybe we can get a, a little clearer, um, and not necessarily from you, but we'll, we'll seek a clearer explanation of-
As I said, two or three minutes, even five minutes, I don't think's the problem. Where's the exact dividing line? Hard, hard to say. Okay, so, um, let's, uh, documents, if any documents that are provided to you as backup to the agenda, those are public records unless it's involving a closed session matter. And so the public has a right to see those and you should have, uh, copies available to the public. Um, let's see, are we running, are we getting close to, okay, um,
So-
So the statutory penalties-
So Ron, hang, hang on a second. I'm on that last item. Um, so one of us, you know, sometimes there's often things that come up on the agenda where one of us has a different idea about how to propose it or address it. And so we'll produce something and then we'll distribute it at the board meeting. We're put, in the Zoom days, we'd put it up on the screen. What are we supposed to do in that situation?
If a member of the public wanted a copy of that, they would have a right to it. So we'd have to somehow make a copy. Um, so if it's on a piece of paper-
We should get to Megan.
Your staff could maybe go to a photocopy machine and make a copy. If it's on Zoom, um, is there, I assume there's some electronic way of copying it somehow? We'd have to talk to IT and figure out how to do it.
I mean, everybody sees it at the same time, the board and-
Uh, well, if everybody sees it, then you're okay. Yeah. And then they can get a copy later. So if, if they can see it on the screen. If you're in an in-person meeting and you write out something, um, then they might be entitled to a copy. Now, what's, sometimes what happens is somebody makes a motion and then, um, another board member wants to amend the motion. So they write out something, uh, with a little bit different language. If you present that orally and the people in the audience can hear it, I don't know that that's, they're not likely to ask for a copy of that. And plus it'll be in the minutes. The board's, you know, typically the board secretary might want a copy just to make sure they get it right for the minutes. But, um, you know, but the Brown Act does require that you make copies available. That could be visually, like you said, on the screen, or that could be a photocopy if it's a piece of paper.
Thanks.
So the last section, uh, or one of the last topics has to do with penalties. Um, there are civil penalties and there's criminal penalties for violation of the Brown Act. So any member of the public can go to the district attorney and allege that there was a violation of the Brown Act. And, uh, if there's substance to it, the district attorney might investigate. And it varies from county to county. Most of my experience has been in, in Orange County, but I had a little bit of experience here in LA County. Um, if there's substance to it, um, the district attorney might, uh, ask for documents, might start investigating it. Usually they do that privately. Um, and if they find that, that it was borderline, they'll send a letter to the district, to the board, basically saying that we think there was a violation of the board, of the Brown Act in this way, and we recommend that you not do this again. Uh, and kind of slap your hand, but not, you know, um, uh, make it public. It's kind of rare that they do. But about 10, 12 years ago in Orange County, uh, there was an allegation that a, a district in Orange County violated the Brown Act. The, the, uh, district attorney at the time took it on very publicly and, uh, you know, um, threatened to prosecute. And then they ended up in a settlement. They, they, you know, actually filed a criminal complaint against the board. Uh, they ended up settling it by agreeing to, uh, tape record the closed sessions for a year and to provide those recordings to the court and to the district attorney. Uh, so, you know, you never know what, you know, was going to happen when you get to that, that point. That's up to the district attorney. As far as civil, um, any interested person can file a civil action against the, uh, district for violation of the Brown Act. Uh, they're supposed to send a demand letter first and then give you an opportunity to cure and correct the violation. Um, that's usually you get an attorney involved and then we assist you. I've done a number of those. If we'll look at it and if we think there was, agree that there was a violation, we'll advise you that, yeah, we think you violated the Brown Act. So let's, you know, fix this. So let's say the issue was that it wasn't on the agenda properly or the agenda wasn't sufficiently descriptive. And so somebody complains that you shouldn't have voted on that. And if we agree, we'll advise you to, to cure it by putting it on the agenda for the next board meeting and letting that person know that it's going to be on the agenda for the next board meeting. They can come in during public comments and make a statement. And, uh, and then you can vote on it and take action. And then that's the end of it. They can't file a lawsuit, uh, unless they allege that that wasn't a proper cure. But most of the time they, you know, that precludes a lawsuit most of the time. Um, so I mentioned that on the next few slides. Um, they can award attorneys fees if they're successful in a civil lawsuit. So that can get, uh, very expensive. Um, sometimes we don't agree that there was a violation. So we'll tell them we don't think there was a violation. And then, you know, so sometimes they back off. Sometimes they, they file lawsuit. It just, uh, depends. If they prevail, like I said, they can get attorney's fees. The court can order you to comply. They could rescind the action that you took, uh, whatever the court feels is appropriate, uh, under the circumstances. Here's a, uh, you know, uh, typical, uh, what a cease and desist letter- Here's a, uh, you know, uh, typical, uh, what a cease and desist letter, uh, might look like, that might get sent, there's examples in the, uh, Brown Act itself. So I won't specifically, um, go into that just now because I know we're short on time. The other thing, um, I'll mention and then I'll open it up to questions, is disruptions, if you have disruptions, there is provisions in the Brown Act, um, I think I've got those at the end. Oh, and there was one other topic I was going to talk about, is the disclosure of confidential information. So let me talk about that first and then I'll, I'll talk about, uh, you know, anything basically that's discussed in closed session is confidential, board members should not disclose that publicly. An example of that might be, um, instructions that you give to your labor negotiator. That you, you agree that, um, the bottom line for the district for as far as salary increases is 2%, but you want your negotiator to offer 1% and see if they can negotiate 1%. And a board member leaks it to the, to the public that you're willing to go to 2%. That would be, you know, a violation of the Brown Act, leaking confidential information. That can, uh, you know, be remedied, you know, if, if, you know, for sure it was one of the board members, you can get, go to court and get an injunction, a court order ordering them to stop, uh, leaking confidential information or disclosing confidential information. It can be referred to a grand jury. So there's a number of ramifications to that. But in the, most of the situations that I've been involved with this, it's very difficult to determine whether there was a violation. It, it's not always a board member, it could be a staff member too, who happened to be in the closed session. But it's a lot of times difficult to determine who, what the source of the leak was. It's also difficult to determine if it was an actual leak. Because, you know, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that, um, a union president might, uh, who's a good poker player, might, uh, be bluffing. And so, you know, make a public statement that I know the board is willing to go to 2% and just guess and maybe right, or, you know, um, and there was no leak. So, you know, it's a, that's a tough, tough issue that comes up every once in a while.
Ask a question on that one?
Sure.
Does it matter, would it matter if the leaker is still an employee or board member at the time? If that person is not there anymore, is there any remedy in those kind of situations?
Not really, because the usual remedy is to order them not to do it again. And so if they're already gone, um, it becomes kind of moot at that point. Yeah, I mean, there's no specific remedy, I don't know, there's no like, uh, financial penalty or fine or anything like that. Whether the district attorney would take that on as a criminal violation, I, I don't know. I'm not aware of any district attorney whoever has taken that particular issue on, uh, as a criminal, uh, violation. So it's possible that, that could happen. And then the last thing, oh, go ahead.
So, yeah, what have DAs typically taken on in terms of, um, closed session violations?
Typically, the ones that I've experienced are things like the agenda not being, um, sufficiently clear, uh, discussing the budget in closed session, kind of that example I gave where you start talking about, uh, budget priorities and re, you know, reconfiguring the budget rather than doing that in open session. Not having an attorney present, you know, and discussing litigation, um, that type of thing. Those are the things that the district attorney has usually taken on.
Brenna, I saw that, uh, earlier, you wanted to ask a question. And then Megan, after that, do we have any questions from the chat? Oh, it's the same one?
Yeah, I, I, for us, I think it is, is with our, our board appointed committees, is understanding how long, um, with the executive order, we could potentially meet remotely versus returning back in person and then still trying to make everything accessible, possibly for those that maybe aren't comfortable coming in person like via Zoom. I think we're trying to do that shift and what would that look like for board appointed committees?
Well, it would be similar to a, um, to the board itself. Right now you have flexibility because of the executive order, uh, to be able to do the meetings, uh, by Zoom. So, um, as long as everybody has access, you post your agenda, you, on the agenda, it indicates how people can access the meeting through Zoom, um, and everybody's, it has actual accessibility, you should be okay. What kind of problems have you run into?
Well, I think we're getting to that point where some of our committees would like to return in person and have expressed wanting to come back in person. So I think, knowing that we're moving towards that, that point of coming, you know, together like this, how do I still make it accessible to those? I mean, am I required to still under this? I think that's what I'm trying to understand. How do we make that transition and am I still trying to support both?
Well, you could have a hybrid meeting like this one.
So it would, we would be required to do this.
Definitely do, just like this meeting, allow people to come in person and allow, um, people to attend by Zoom. So if you do both, you should be fine.
Again, I'm trying to define the accessibility for that, but are you required to do that? That's the question.
I don't think you're required to, but I, you know, you have to be careful about that because, um, then you could get complaints about, from people, members of the public who want to attend, who don't feel it's safe. Although we're getting to the point, um, where, uh, it, it, that may not be a very strong argument, as we progress and new guidelines come out, um, certainly anybody who's been vaccinated, you know, can certainly attend a public meeting. But I suppose somebody who's, you know, not vaccinated, who, uh, has to keep social distancing and who, or who's somebody who might have a medical condition that makes them susceptible to COVID, um, could argue that it's not, uh, fair because I, I, you know, it's not safe for me to attend an in-person meeting. But I, I suppose if you set up a in-person meeting that meets all of the, um, public health guidelines that are in place at that time, and of course they keep, they change as the conditions change. But, um, uh, I, I think you should probably be okay, you're not required to do it by Zoom, um, you're just allowed to do it by Zoom. So, what, for example, one of the issues that's come up, uh, in the recent days with the new guidelines, is the new guidelines say that, um, in, in indoors in K through 12 buildings, you have to wear a mask, everybody, uh, you know, has to wear a mask whether you're vaccinated or, or not. And we're not sure if that includes board meetings like this meeting, because general office buildings for other businesses, if you're vaccinated, you're not required to wear a mask. So that, there's a little gray area there, we're not sure.
This is a K-12 building right here.
So.
Uh, so then the, the teleconferencing relaxation rules, are those set to expire in September, I heard? Or is there a end date that they've sent for the?
I'm not sure if there's an end date, there, you know, I haven't heard that. It's possible that there is, but they're in place right now. Once they're over, then we go back to the teleconferencing and you have to meet in person. And it only under limited conditions can you have a teleconference.
Right.
If you have a teleconference, you have to post it.
I thought the governor extended him for an additional year. The emergency order.
So we, we can look into that, but that will influence what we do?
If that's.
Megan, were there any questions off the chat?
That, well, that, not off the chat, but that was a question that Dr. Gotanda had with respect to, like, LCAP, that we've gotten a much better response via Zoom, can we continue to have those meetings only via Zoom without the in-person component if they choose to?
For now, yes, until the executive order expires. And I, I had not heard, uh, that it, there was a specific expiration date, but there may, there may be. But as long as the executive order, um, is in place, then you can do the meeting.
We'll keep our eye on that. Thank you, Mr. Wankart, thank you very much for your time here tonight. And I just want to give a last chance for, for Ami, if you had any questions, or are you good? All right, well, thank you, sir.
Sure, if there's any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to.
We see if maybe any of the chairs or vice chairs, just real quick, have a question? Cause they all are here in attendance.
Right, that's why I was hoping they would have put them into chat.
Oh, at this point, they have, I'm, I'm following the chat.
If you want to email me questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Awesome.
Thank you for, uh, for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to authorization, do we have a motion to approve the PV High School Pivot ROV Robotics Team Mate World Championships Johnson City, Tennessee, August 3rd through August 8th, 2021 field trip? Sir, a second. All in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. We've allowed to have discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yeah, so, so, well, this is our first out-of-state field trip, so that, that's why I, I wanted to understand. So what are the differences in rules and approvals, um, for out-of-state versus in-state field trips? Cause we've also got one this evening.
Correct. So we are following the protocols, we're asking the host organization and then what we have here, and then we're monitoring for any of the out-of-state restrictions. I think everything's pretty much loosened up now, but we did have the teams go through a comprehensive kind of, uh, they actually had to check it all, they had to review it all and fill it out. So they've had to go through the protocols and then they've also had to give us if there's any organizational, so like say it's a, uh, well, in this case it's ROV, but like later on you'll see, you know, cheer and some other ones. But all of them actually have some type of a protocol that they're following, um, regarding attendance, um, participation, masking, uh, immun, uh, vaccinations, all of that stuff has already been reviewed. And also those that are the, uh, sponsoring and/or supervisory adults understand that if they get more strict, even though it's been approved, we're going to have to come back and we're going to have to update it again prior to their departure. And then also if it kind of loosens up, we're still sticking with kind of whatever the protocol was going into it, just cause, uh, most people don't want to have to fill it out again right now, to be quite honest. So they've had to jump through quite a few hurdles, these folks in this particular situation did fill it out over the weekend upon being notified that they made it to nationals. But in, in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're following because that's the guidance that we're being, we've been given by the county to be able, and what we need to follow here in K-12.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we will now recess to closed session. Uh, it is 4:04 PM, we anticipate returning at 5:00 PM. Thank you. Closed session agenda items. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. Directions on how to submit a comment are available at www.pvpusd.net/feedback. Ms. Westcott, do we have any comments?
No public comments.
Thank you. The board will now recess to closed session to discuss the following items. Conference with labor negotiator. Public employee performance evaluation. Public employee appointment, public employment. Public employee discipline dismissal, release. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, denial of claim subdivision B of Government Code, Section 54956.9 and 945.6, ASK claim number 2107987. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivisions D2 and E2 of Government Code, Section 54956.9, facts and circumstances withheld due to student privacy rights pursuant to 20 U.S.C.A. 1232G, FERPA, and Education Code 49060, et cetera. OAH case number 2021010749. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivisions, subdivisions D2 and E2 of Government Code, Section 54956.9, two cases, Snyder v. Palos Verdes Peninsula, USD, L.A.C., case number 20STCV48622. Butler v. Palos Verdes Peninsula, USD, case number 21TRCV00016. We estimate to reconvene to open session at 6:30. Thank you.